...officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage. Bless the members of our community who comes here to speak before council so they state their cause with honesty and humility. Lord, we ask you to bless us all that everything we do here tonight will move you to welcome us one day into your kingdom as good and faithful servants. We ask this in the name of our brother Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The next step should be the approval of minutes of the previous meetings, but I didn't get a copy of the previous.
I've got a copy right now and I just don't know.
All right. Okay. Any changes? Corrections?
I've been fine.
All right. Minutes stand is approved. Okay, we have oath of office. We have two police officers, Brandon Young and Jared Francis, to be sworn in.
You want video?
You're going to go video for him?
We do. It's a Bible.
There we go.
Repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Jared Francis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution.
That I'll support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances of the village of Green Hills, Ohio.
Charter and ordinances of the village of Green Hills, Ohio.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties of office of police officer.
Discharge the duties of the office of police officer.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations. I would just like to point out to council that in terms of hiring law enforcement officers in 2021 has been a daunting task. The village of Green Hills has been exceptionally blessed to find these two young officers and very pleased to have them here if we get sworn in by the mayor. So we'll start with Brandon.
If you have anything to say to council. I'd just like to thank you guys for inviting me into your committee. I'm very blessed to be appointed and I hope to serve well to you guys.
Welcome.
Not really much at all.
Ditto.
Honestly, it's just I'm so thankful to be here and thankful to be in front of you and having the time to do everything.
We're pleased to get two new firearms instructors in the making. They were both top guns at their academy. Jared was a top driver as well. I would explain to you that Brandon was able to start immediately following the academy and Jared would be actually starting duty on the 30th. That's why he's not in uniform yet. He had to give two weeks' notice to his current. We welcome you both. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay. All right. This is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. This is not intended to be a dialogue with council or village staff. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response, as will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to three minutes. Speakers may or may not use any or all of their time to other speakers. Anybody?
And if you wanted to leave, you don't have to stay, but you're welcome to stay if you want to.
She wants to talk.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Patricia Bender and I'm on Handel Lane. I received my June journal and I was reading the article of the municipal manager addressed questions from the Green Hills residents and I guess this is from an April meeting and I guess we missed the May meeting. Because it talks about it being at the April meeting, but I thought it was at the May meeting that we had addressed some of our concerns with difficulty with communicating when we're getting no response from council. I'm aware that you have it in your bylaws or ordinances or whatever that you don't have to talk to us and that we only get three minutes, but as a citizen, it's very nice to be able to have conversation that is a two-way street instead of us just being able to talk up here and then reading our journal to get some of the answers. One thing I noted in here was, you know, we asked questions of concerns but really didn't get the details of what we asked about. The same thing with the lawsuit. And when I read the notes that were affirmed from last month, there is a detailed paragraph of Yvonne addressing the suit that was done and the hour spent and the dollar amount, and I really don't ever remember hearing that at the council meeting. So I'm a little confused with this being an April meeting and then reading the notes that were affirmed for the May meeting. So I'm a little confused on that. One other thing I wanted to ask about was I really would like to see Handel Lane be put on the list of sidewalks that are fixed. We have two major sidewalks that are elevated across the street and I've actually several years ago sprained my ankle walking because they're so elevated. So I hope that Handel Lane can be considered when you're looking at doing the sidewalks.
It will be.
It was definitely on the list. It will fall in order.
It just is. It's not in the article. Yeah, it's not in the article on here on all the list.
Because it's going in phases.
Yeah, it's going in phases as we can afford to do.
Well, I would think you would list all the sidewalks you're doing, but maybe.
I actually add that and I have a report, so I'll.
Okay, good. You're going to go over that. The other thing I think that would be really nice is if the streets services could please clean the gutters, the, that are, not the gutters, but the covers over the drains, because they get so filled with leaves and dirt and tree limbs that when we have the major floods like we've had in the last week or two, I would say, that we end up with all this stuff covering those guards. And it would be nice because I know the maintenance people go around and they clean and pick up and they shred all our waste, but they kind of walk right by those gutters. So whoever on streets and services, it would be a nice thing.
That's not correct. They clean them every week.
No, they don't. I know because I'm on my street and I watch it. So maybe they do on your street.
Okay.
So anyways, the one other thing I wanted to say was really think about putting bathrooms on the commons for concerts and for these movie theaters, because people have said they're not going to come because they have little ones. Thank you very much.
And I will comment on that. When we have the concerts on the commons, the school district allows us to use the bathrooms that are over in the library portion.
Yes, but if you're an older person and you have difficulty with steps and you don't even know where they are, I think we can afford to put in a quarter wrap.
That's your opinion. Okay. And also, the questions that you had asked were from the April 27th, their April meeting, not the May meeting, because you weren't here at the May meeting.
Really?
Right. So I happened to watch that meeting again last night with my grandson for a school project, so I know who spoke.
Okay. Can I address the lawsuits?
Okay. Because you had also mentioned the two lawsuits. There were actually two lawsuits that were being discussed there. One was a code violation lawsuit that the village filed that lawsuit. The other one where we put the dollar, the cost to us, was one that we weren't even involved in, but we were included in too, so.
That's right. And to me, it was like you were, it appeared as if there were a lot of people that were involved in that lawsuit and yet the village took on that responsibility of cost for those other people who were in line and break out.
Well, we had no choice. We were so heated, so we, yeah, we're interested that we really had nothing to do with. That was unfortunate. You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Can I address one thing with communication? I have responded to every email that you've ever sent me. I don't know if it's other ones, people you haven't heard back from, but I have responded to every email that you've gotten. And if you would like to unblock me on social media, then I could actually respond on there as well, but you've had me blocked for over a year now, so I can't actually.
On our Green Hills group, yes.
Just in general.
I'm aware of that.
Yeah, but if you'd like to, then I can respond to anything on there, but currently I can't see anything that you put up on there, so I can't provide anything on there. I'm not sure if anybody else is, but I just wanted to make that comment.
Yes, I, I'm not that I think that's a good place to be communicating with us. I think that's what we need.
I just have one question. I called over here at the office, I guess downstairs regarding the property on, what is that, the street right across from the?
Farragut.
Not Farragut, right across the street.
Damon.
No.
Ingraham.
No, we are on Farragut and we cross from Winton.
Cromwell.
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 Cromwell. Where they, where those one houses were tore down and it's the last house, I think it's number 20.
The townhouse.
Yeah, the townhouse. I think it's number 20. And I had called at one time because the grass was extremely high. In addition, the bushes and leaves or whatever are growing up over the townhouse. I mean, I, I know there's an ordinance or something regarding upkeep of property and I was just wondering, was any, obviously I don't think anybody's living there, but I was just wondering who does what to ensure that people keep up their property or have it looking presentable, because that is horrible over there. The bushes and all the leaves or whatever it is is growing over the property, the front of the door and the whole nine yards. So I was just wondering, and I guess people do go around, somebody goes around from the council, I guess, looking at people's property, making sure we're doing what we're supposed to.
We have a code enforcement officer. I'm aware of the one that you're talking about. We're trying under weeds to get the tall, the stuff that's really growing up. We have actually had people say they're not weeds, so that is kind of a tough one to force. In terms of the bushes right against the house, we don't have any limitations on those sizes. We only do if they're out in the yards, you know, within a certain distance of setbacks, but we're, we're working with what we've got to try to address it.
Oh, okay. Well, it looks terrible. I was just.
Definitely. Yeah.
One thing that does happen is if lawns are ignored, we do give them warnings and then we go ahead and proceed and cut those lawns, but we have to give them a warning, wait for time, which all, in this weather, obviously the grass grows pretty rapidly, but we have to give them a warning, we cut it, and then we have to assess them. You know, just out of fairness, we have to give a warning and it does take time. I have the same concern. We're just trying to keep the properties looking good and enforcing what we can. It's a tough battle.
Good question. Yeah.
And I was just asking Yvonne, I know we were over 100 orders last year, if not more, to people to cut the grass, and I don't know how many we had this year. Plus, the last meeting, we passed an ordinance to hire a new inspector to look at those things. All right, moving on. Municipal manager reports to village officials. Municipal manager Yvonne Cogan.
Thank you. I want to start, it's been a while since we've done public record requests, but we did receive some this quarter, so I wanted to start with reviewing those. We received one from the Wittenwood School District for copies of all permit fee schedules for the village of Green Hills from 2016 to the present. All income tax receipts from all employees of Wittenwood School Districts for the tax years 2016 to the present, and income tax receipts for all Village of Green Hills contractors for tax years 2016 to present. And that was from Courtney Wilson with the school district. And just for the record, the majority of that we cannot provide because tax records are confidential, so, but we responded to that. The next one I received was from Patricia Anwon requesting copies of federal guidelines for municipalities use of code relief funds, documentation on the date, the $212,000 was received in 2020, copy of federal guidelines for the American Rescue Funds, of which we will receive about $700,000 over the next two years, copies of complete detail for funding, for Fund 2151 expenditures of 2020, including bids, contracts for services and materials, and copies of complete detail, actual and anticipated expenditure for Fund 2115 expenditures of 2021, including bids, contracts for services and materials. Next one was from Pat Anwon requesting copies of all approved zoning plans, including maps records for conversion of current parking lot at the end of Chalmers Lane from 1938, garage complex to the present, conversion from garages to gravel lot to paved lot to enlarge public parking with handicap spaces. Copies of resolutions or ordinances enabling the purchase and conversion of a garage complex to a municipal parking lot that directed the expansion thereof, copy of all Village of Green Hills ordinances pertaining to public parking lot, lots of setbacks, drainage capacity which were in place for each state applicable to conversion stages of Chalmers Park parking lot 1972 to present, and copies of real estate tax payments made by the Village of Green Hills through the county treasurer for the public parking lot 2010 to 20, to present, excuse me. The last one, I think, no, sorry. Also from Pat Anwon requesting all internal communication regarding removal of privately-owned basketball goal from Palm Park, copies of citations and/or buildings and a fee to the owner of this basketball goal, and copy of any village ordinance that allows removal citation for recreation equipment left in the village of Green Hills parks. And the final one, also submitted by Pat Anwon, copies of all Village Green Hills accounts payable check registers, including payroll from 2015 to the present day, copies of all 1099 forms reported to Internal Revenue Service from 2015 to present day. So that's it for this quarter on public records. I also want to mention that the pool is off to a relatively good start considering what we had to go through last year. We're having some problems again with pool attire. If you remember about three or four years ago, we had a big issue with that and, you know, the staff really stayed up on it and we got on top of it. It's picking up again. We actually made some signs this time to, that like depict what is the proper attire. I'm not going to go into detail, but yeah. It's just kind of hard on interpretation, so we're going to try to refine that. We've had some more staff discussions with Swim Safe on that, and we're all going to make an effort to try to stay on top of it, but it gets a little difficult sometimes, so just be aware of that. You will probably hear about it, but we are working on it every day to try to keep this a family-friendly place to go. So.
Can I ask a question about that? Just curious, Jeff, like it seems like the lawns, when someone says this is a piece of art and somebody might interpret that as a piece of junk in the front yard, but we can't do anything because of free speech. Is the same apply?
It is a difficult issue to address. And we've looked at it in the past and continuing to try to address it the best we can within our ability.
And one of the things we've had to do now is when people go in without their suit sign, that, that was really bad because they weren't putting suits on. So now we're actually having to ask at the gate, show us your suit. And it sounds extreme, but if you knew what they were wearing, you would be glad to do it.
With swimsuits, isn't it, some of it is the cotton? If it's not swimsuit material, that can damage the.
That's true. Yes, that's, that's true. The fibers can be bad. But you know, if you have kids there, I don't think you'd want to be seeing some of the things we're seeing. So just be aware of it. You may hear about it, but we're, we're working on it as best we can. Also wanted to give you a quick update on the NHL process because we had the survey that was out for a period of time. That data has been compiled and sent to our consultant and she's putting that together and will incorporate in the report that we hope to have to you fairly soon.
So we're waiting for input back from her?
Right. That was all part of her process to compile and.
And do you have an idea of roughly when that would be or?
I know she's working on all the stuff I sent her, which was a lot of information, but I would hope that maybe within the next month or two, we'll actually have the report.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. That's what we have.
Yvonne, would you please communicate with me some time about where the tree should go? And I need to tell Greg about that. And we would like to do it like before the weekend.
Okay.
Or if not, on Monday. I just need to leave him a date.
Yeah. Okay. All right, I'll get that for you. We were actually planning on next week, but.
That's, that would be fine. Just give me, he needs to have a date to put it on his own agenda of what he's doing.
Okay. Awesome.
Okay, moving on. Law director, Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, mayor. No report tonight.
Clerk of council, Tanya Cole. Okay. Chief of police, Neil Fergman.
I do have a report. Well, obviously, the department was very happy to see what transpired tonight with the mayor swearing in our two newest officers, which brings us up finally to full staff. So we're very pleased that we were able to find two new officers of their caliber. On a more crime-related note, we arrested a suspect by the name of Keith Williams, who had been a suspect in two Green Hills robberies. First occurred actually earlier in the year when force was used to steal $20 from a resident at the Coin Laundry at Six Endicott. And we had evidence that showed this suspect fleeing towards the F-section after the offense. And then just a few months later, while we were still working on that one, there was another robbery over in the F-section involving the same suspect where what I learned was called a bootleg cab, that you can get off of Facebook, had responded and the driver was robbed of about $100 and a weapon firearm was shown in that robbery. And while we were working on evidence to indict, this same suspect was arrested in Cincinnati for aggravated murder in Avondale. So suffice it to say, I don't think we'll be seeing this suspect in our area anywhere anytime soon. On a very bright note, our Waycross Communications partners allowed us to use the Talking with Green Hills times. We featured two officers, Carl Holbrook and Zach Braun, and they talked about some of the things coming up for the summer, such as the managers' park talks and some of the programs that now that the pandemic is over, we're going to get back into full speed. Officer Holbrook will be going to defensive tactics school here shortly, so he will become our in-house defensive tactics instructor. That's always been a popular class, so we'll be happy to offer that again to our residents. And that program is available on demand at Waycross Community Media, so if you haven't seen it, anyone that might be watching tonight, we encourage you to take a listen. Sergeant Patton also participated and there's some good information that can be found. We also are working on completing the outfitting of our new exterior ballistic vests. Those are outer carriers and it distributes about 20 pounds that previously goes all around the gun belt on the actual external vests that officers have. Probably the bright spot is that we are using an $11,000 grant received from the state attorney general to fund the bulk of that body armor. During the most recent month, we made 16 criminal arrests, including arrests for domestic violence, disorderly conduct, and drug possession. We responded to 189 incidents, including 29 squad runs, 13 parking complaints, nine domestic trouble runs, eight intrusion alarms, eight noise complaints. We provided mutual aid in 11 instances. We issued 30 traffic citations, 44 warnings, and investigated two traffic crashes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Comments? Chief?
Yeah, I actually have a question. That incident with the Hamilton County officer that had her gun stolen out of the car, is that typical practice? Is there anything we need to learn from that? Not that you're not doing it.
No, and no. We don't, we have weapons that are secured in our Mark Cruisers, but they're in gun locks and we don't leave weapons unsecured in our vehicles.
And I wasn't assuming that. I just thought I'd ask the question. Thank you.
Okay, mayor's report, court receipts for the month of May. The ending bank balance was $11,397.37. Checks will be issued to the state of Ohio for $874.50, Hamilton County $31.50, and the village of Green Hills $4,354.43. And then I just looked at an email right before the meeting that I got from the municipal, Ohio Municipal League. Have you received anything where the state, the state budget's trying to reduce the amount of money we get from the federal government?
I saw that. Just did.
They're showing that instead of, if I'm reading this right, instead of the $700,000, we would only get $373,000.
I didn't see anything today on that.
Yeah, it just came in. Kind of.
Yeah, it just came in.
I didn't.
And I guess part of their plan is because the federal government didn't include townships.
Correct.
They're going to give townships money and reduce the money that we share mark to us. And it's supposedly not coming from the major cities, it's coming from all the 50,000 smaller communities in the state.
Wow, that's interesting.
So anyway, there we go. We may not have did what we think we're doing.
Wow.
We'll see. And I don't know, you know, if the budget's been passed or not, but they've been playing around. All right, that's all I have. Community development, Jeff Holder.
First off, we have a community development meeting tomorrow between 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock. So that's June 23rd. One of the things that we're doing, and actually I think this was Natasha's idea, to kick this off, is we'll be giving one on each side of Wyndham Road. We've taken nominations. There's going to be two others or three. We're going to do it.
Additional one.
Yeah, additional one.
Yep.
And we will discuss tomorrow whether we want to have more than one per side. We might up that because there were so many nominations, but this side will go in front of the homes that will be selected, the home on either side. Again, trying to build enthusiasm and encouragement of caring for your property, taking pride in Green Hills. So I do think it's a great suggestion by Natasha and we're implementing it. So that concludes my report.
Great design on the sign. Maybe you have a mind.
If you notice, there's been street banners with the same art. Call it consistency.
Well, it looks great.
All right, moving on. Safety, Melody Armis.
We did have a meeting today and we discussed, there was just two topics on our conversation. One was a resident had complained that the traffic at, on Damon heading towards Winton as they pass Drummond, it was, people were speeding to catch the light. If they can see a green light, they tend to speed up. She had suggested possibly putting up a stop sign, so we, and talking with the committee, there are some rules about stop signs and how close they can be to traffic lights and also there was a study done and that intersection at this time by the state doesn't warrant stop signs, but we did talk about, have people have seen the mobile speed limit sign? It catches data. Currently, I think I saw it on Farragut, heading towards the commons from.
Right around the school.
From, from the school. Thank you. I'm like from my house. I'm like from my house, but heading towards the Commons. One of the good thing about those signs is they are mobile, so we can place them in various locations. If you have any suggestions, I know the chief is always listening to them, but what we did talk about is it does collect data even when it looks like it's off. So that's kind of a, sorry, I'm giving away tips. It's a stealth mode. So it is collecting data all the time, which is great because then we can see how fast people are going and the times that they're going that speed. They also do it with where you can see the speed. So that's a good tool that we can deploy. So I did, we did discuss putting it on Damon in that area. And I know we also mentioned in Cromwell, there's some issues sometimes. I'm guessing there's also by Farragut and Ingram, if you're, if you see the light and it's green, people are tending to speed up. And we had a general discussion about people not stopping for stop signs. So if you're listening to this, stop for stop signs. So I know that's something that we're watching and we, and we are, our officers have seen it and are ticketing for that. So implementing the speed sign was our first priority. And the second one was a resident had sent emails concerning a possibility of no parking on Avenue in the cul-de-sac. A couple letters were sent out to residents about this, and no response was received. And a third letter was sent out, and then we got some input from a resident about the hardship that that would incur for their family who lives on that street. And it was decided today or this week that they would not implement that. So now, on Avenue, you cannot park on Wednesdays, and that's because the rumpkey drivers have asked us not to park, have anyone park there because they've been having issues getting through more so recently than they did in the past. So nothing is changing. The no parking is only for Wednesdays, and otherwise you can still park on Avenue. And that was the only cul-de-sac that was impacted with that possible procedure that was going to go in place, but it is not. It remains the same. You can continue to park on Avenue, except on Wednesdays. That's all I have for my report.
Great. Recreation, Cable TV, Natasha Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We also have a meeting tomorrow, the 23rd, but ours is from 2:00 to 3:00. And looking forward, we've got the movie night on Friday. This is kind of our first step into getting our feet wet with some events this year. Going to try to do some things around the village. You know, we couldn't really do a lot last year, so this is kind of our, let's give this a shot and see if it works. We do realize that there are no restrooms available on the Commons. The feasibility of having one brought out, you know, delivered for a two-hour event and then picked up and removed is not really budget conscious, so we're not pursuing that. However, I'm going to talk with Mike and see if it's possible, maybe we could move it up on the parking lot by Maloways with the restrooms that are over there, if it's feasible to get the screen up there because then parking would be better. And the restrooms are right there, so we're going to look at maybe doing that as long as it's feasible for the next go-around. But this current one, the first one, will be on the Commons. And that's all I've got.
I have a couple questions.
Yeah.
I can't remember with the car show, since it draws so many people, do we usually have portalets during the car show?
No. School.
The school's still open. Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I was just wondering for a bigger event if it makes sense, but I forgot about the school being open. The other thing that I was really thrilled to see is the new mulch at the playground behind Maloway's because it's starting to get overgrown and stuff. And, you know, in the season when, you know, bridges all need to be rebuilt, it's nice that we're maintaining that. So whoever was involved, thank you.
And I will make a comment on portalets. Thinking in the past was that you would have to get it for almost the whole summer to leave it there. And that sometimes creates a problem when there's no activity for the use of it. Some places where we put them up, we've had vandalism, tipping them over, various issues. We did, when we did, constructed the gazebo, it looked at having restroom facility built underneath that, except Metropolitan Sewer District wanted a $20,000 TAP fee for sewage.
And that's just the TAP?
And that was just the TAP fee. So there was no way we could afford it.
I've seen a number of parks where they have built them under the gazebo and that kind of thing, but I'm sure it's not cheap. It is a construct.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but when they have the concerts, Jim Miller actually has to identify somebody to stand there and monitor the restrooms. So if we were doing it, we'd probably have to pay somebody to stand there and watch the restrooms.
Exactly.
And actually, Jim Miller pays his granddaughter.
Oh, really? I know that at one point, the shopping center did have. I know that it's no shade.
Yeah.
Yeah. The shopping center used to allow us to use their facilities and...
And I've been in that room. It's a paint storage room right there.
Yes. Okay. Intergovernmental Affairs, Laws and Rules, Maria Wolter.
We did not meet today because of a lack of agenda. And if it's okay with Mrs. Hermes to have a meeting again of safety and laws and rules on August the 24th? Like, that's two months. Would that be okay?
That works for me.
Okay.
Great. Service and Streets, Jennifer Osmonogon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received quite a few issues in my Green Hills email inbox. And in most cases, they were also sent to the other council members, the city manager, the mayor, and the service department. But I wanted to go over a list of these and address some of the issues, what's been done to remedy them. The following list contains items to be included on the agenda for the committee meeting scheduled for June 2nd, which had to be rescheduled. I've gone over each of these items with Avon Kovak, Mike Castor, and the code enforcement officer for this report. The honeysuckle growth on the north side properties to the shed area of 7 Chalmers Court. The growth of that honeysuckle is not considered a health hazard, and the removal of this growth would create a major privacy issue for the residents who face Wynton Road. The patches of poison ivy. The removal of this is expensive and has environmental repercussions from the use of poisons and weed killers. And this has been, it's just impossible to eliminate all the poison ivy in the wooded areas. The 1.5 feet of grass in the rear of a Chalmers Court property, if it's visible to the code enforcement officer, then they will be cited and asked to mow the grass. If it's not visible, then trespassing is not an option to see the grass overgrowth. With the new code enforcement officer, he's very excited about his job, and he's, takes it very seriously. But we have to give him time to get some of these things done. And he can't trespass on people's property to look for code enforcement. It's just, he can't walk in their yard, you know, lean over and stuff like that. So that has to be taken into consideration, too. So also, the rotting dead tree stump behind 28 Chalmers, which harbors fungus and insects. The tree was removed down to the level required by the owner's relatives because it was a public hazard. It is on private property. The stump is not the responsibility of the village, and the stump removal is costly. It's not just as simple as pruning trees or, you know, removing yard waste. There was complaint that broken bricks and tree debris chossed into the park behind 30 Chalmers Lane, and that's been resolved through the lawsuit. Sidewalks. The sidewalks are, this, Yvonne put this on her blog about the sidewalk repairs, so I'll address that where this is going on. The heaved sidewalks, if it's over two inches, that has to be replaced. So the trip hazards that they were going around in, I say shaving, but I know that's not the way. The sidewalk cutting. So they're, if it's under two inches, then they can do that. But if it's over two inches, like, you know, a lot of the heaved ones, they can't, they will have to replace it. So there are several areas that, you know, they're trying to get bids. Those will be considered, it's all financial consideration for a lot of that. And there was a pause in the sidewalk repair during the COVID shutdown because things had to be put on hold. The village is covering the cost for the repairs, and the budget for these repairs is a major consideration. So, you know, it's not as simple as just, you know, going around and replacing everything. I will go over real quick what Yvonne put on the blog. We've been working on the sidewalks since 2020, and the village has been repairing sidewalks using a technique called concrete cutting to remove trip hazards less than two inches in height, a method that is considerably cheaper than replacing entire sidewalk squares. This is typically an expense of the private property owner. However, the village is doing what it can to absorb the cost of these repairs this time around. Due to the financial impact of the coronavirus, the village is doing these repairs in phases. The first phase was the cheapest, I believe. Was that the...
Yeah, that's why we did that one.
So it's, yeah. The first phase completed in October 2020 included 408 trip hazards on Avenue, Ashby, Andover, Cromwell, Drummond, DeWitt, Damon, Dayspring, Deer Hill, and Chalmers. The cost of the village was $28,700. The next two phases will begin in mid-July of this year and will include removing a combined 765 trip hazards on Adele, Burley, Bayham, Beckford, Briarwood, Brompton, Bachman, Enfield, Ingram, Farragut, Falcon, Flanders, Foxworth, Gambier, Jennings, Japonica, and Inman. The cost of the village will be $57,577.19. The sidewalk audit in 2020 yielded that 2,030 trip hazards have been identified. The cost to remove and replace these trip hazards would be $406,000. The concrete cutting method is $155,825. So the total savings is quite significant of $250,175. During the same audit, 41 trip hazards over two inches in height were identified that will need to be removed and replaced. These include 34 Andover, Andover and Burley, 15 Avenue, 24 Bachman, 13 Bachman, 133 Bayham, 104 Bayham, 41 Beckford, 20 Damon, 41 Damon, 43 Damon, 60 Damon, 76 Damon, Ingram and Ireland, 14 Alona, 37 Alona. Sorry, there's a lot. 62 Beckford, 6 Beckford, 5 Briarwood, 3 Briarwood, 23 Briarwood, 6 Burley, 10 Burley, 78 Burley, 94 Burley, 127 Burley, 12 Chalmers Court, 384 Inman, 388 Inman, 399 Inman, 400 Inman, 21 Ireland, 25 Ireland, 26 Ireland, 85 Ireland, 101 Ireland. Was your street mentioned on there?
No.
Okay. So what was that?
Handle.
Handle, where on handle?
26.
26 handle? Okay.
That might be in one of the future phases.
That might be in the, yeah, because there's five phases, so...
There's two in that area.
Okay.
There's more than two.
It's probably the tree that made it go.
They're all over.
Yeah. There, she also, Yvonne mentioned that they're maintaining a running list of the trip hazards that cannot be remedied with the concrete cutting method. Those will need to be addressed still. Please remember that trip hazards continue to develop over time due to tree roots, water settling, and other natural and man-made causes. If, you know, they're working on it. It's taken a while, and it's expensive, so...
You said that was phase two and three. When do you, when do you think phase four? Is that this year or next year?
You know, it's really going to depend that those are, that's something that was cut because we didn't know how serious COVID would be for us, along with some other capital costs. So we are price stretching it right now to even do two phases, but we think it's very important. Could be next year before we can do another phase, especially when we find out now that money's going to be cut, that can prevent us from moving on some of our capital expenses.
Okay. Thanks. Can I have a quick question in the law director? Is it legal to use a drone to look into somebody's backyard?
Yeah.
It depends.
That is a lawyer's...
It depends. We actually just, we just, we just researched that very question, and I think we provided a written opinion on that. And my recollection, I have one of my assistants help me with that. My recollection is that I did not think you could, but the law has since changed that now that may be permitted in certain circumstances.
Wow.
I know, one of the, I know of a situation where the person that was having issue, health code issues, and their backyard thought that we went onto the property, but it was actually the adjacent neighbor that provided the photographs. If you're adjacent to a property, you're in a better place to photograph than we are because we cannot, we can't go back on the property. So it, within reason, you know, we're trying to keep a good community here, and it does help if we know about something that we can legally find out about. But that doesn't mean, I'm encouraging, it still needs to be pursued in a legal, ethical way. But when we get information like that, it's often because of somebody else providing it to us.
Mr. Forbes? In a situation where there would be a probable cause and a police officer is entitled, is allowed to do that or not, either that?
Allowed to do what?
Have a drone.
I'm not...
It's really complicated.
It's very complicated.
Right. It really doesn't have anything to do with probable cause. Probable cause is a test that would allow you to get a warrant to actually go on property to, to make certain inspections. So that really is not relevant to the drone question.
Great.
Do you still have more?
I have more.
Oh, wow.
There were a lot of things that, the Streets and Services Department has been busy. There was a storm sewer lid with a six-inch gap at the curb at 30 Chalmers. Mike Castor checked on it and pushed it back. It was noted that the issue was running. There's broken asphalt at the Palma Park entrance or reported broken asphalt. This was patched last year and will continue to be patched as needed. A mattress was reported behind a building. If the, again, if the code enforcement officer can see that, then he will cite them. The dead tree behind 1 Chalmers Lane, that was involved in a lawsuit as well. Low-hanging limbs from Cromwell to the left side of Chalmers Lane. We talked to Mike about the low-hanging limbs, and they're getting to them. We got feedback on this as well, and there have been, a lot of the limbs have been cut down. So they're getting to it. It's just a lot. So the deserted land from demolished houses with poison ivy and 8-inch tall wind weeds was cleaned up by the service department. This was noted by the complainant. However, apparently it was not to her satisfaction, and she wanted this addressed again. So there's peeling paint on Chalmers Lane buildings. That's currently being addressed by code enforcement. Health code violations, that's, again, part of the lawsuit. An abandoned washer and dryer on a patio in Chalmers Court. If it's visible and the code enforcement officer can see it, then they'll be cited. Brush pile in the Chalmers, and he might, they might have, when I did this, I don't know if there was actually, if things have been cited since then, so I need to find out exactly how many citations he's put out. Health code violations at 30 Chalmers, noncompliant trash cans, lawsuit. I'm going back now. There's so many. Noncompliant trash cans, those will be cited. Weed growth in front of areas of Chalmers, those are being cited if they're, but again, it's what is one person's idea of landscaping and what's another person's idea of weeds? So it's kind of a sticky issue that sometimes, you know, some people may not be happy with what something looks like. But if, if you're cultivating it, then, you know, and it's legal. There was a broken split rail to Palma Park. This was broken by the complainant's tree contractor, but it has been fixed by the service department.
I thought so, yes.
And there's wood debris behind 26 to 30 Chalmers. That was cleaned up, but apparently not to a satisfaction level. That was cleaned up, but apparently not to a satisfaction level. Mud hazard from public sideways on Chalmers. There will be new construction in this area, so there, that'll be an issue that they'll remedy as the construction happens. And then there was a huge pile of brush that has been removed from Chalmers Court, and it was not the Streets and Services Department's garbage to begin with. Yeah.
Well, yeah, there'd be actually two different issues. One of them had a stump so big, our chiper couldn't take us, and the chiper drove away, which caused panic on the front of some, should say neighborhood, but back from there. So we came back with a dump truck, be able to lift up those big trunks. So, and the upwind was put there by a person's tree vendor, and they also did notice about that.
Okay, so that's, they're all on.
Correct. Although brush dust is showing up there, just for the record.
I was told via email that there were 80 pictures taken around Palma Park, Chalmers Lane, and surrounding areas. I did not ask for these pictures to be taken, and I would never ask someone to trespass on another's property in order to obtain photos of possible code violations or issues. I did ask the photographer, Patricia Anne Watt, to submit the pictures to me via email if she would like for me to look them over and pass them on, but I did not request her photography services. I was asked by a Green Hills police officer if I asked her to take these pictures, to which I responded no. I am a firm believer of rules and laws. I follow rules, I follow laws. I would never ask someone to do something breaking the law to serve their purposes. So, just thought I would make that, you know. I, I sat down with Mike and with Yvonne, and they know everything that's going on around here, and they're working on it. And I was just, I was really amazed. Everything that I've mentioned, that I got my complaints and everything, you guys knew everything, every single thing. So it was like, it's not like nobody knows what's going on. It's getting done. They're working hard. The code enforcement officer is, I, I'm really excited that he's here, and I think that, you know, the more that everyone can continue to work together, that I think a lot of these issues that keep coming up will happen. But I can't stress enough that proper reporting of issues needs to be done. And I think that Facebook is an area to vet complaints, and I don't think it's an official way of filing a complaint about something. The email boxes have been fixed, so I've addressed emails that have been sent to me. So Ms. Bender, I would say if you could email the Streets and Services Department, that would be probably the best way to.
Cover the covers on the.
Yeah, I mean, anything. So what I, to all our citizens, we have the, the email boxes are there for a reason, and I think that if, if we get in a more consistent way to communicate issues and problems that we have, they can be solved. Because all this list was emailed to us.
And one other thing, if I could add on to that, because I also have a number of things that have come to me through email, which is fine, is there is the illusion that if you say it on Facebook, that we know that, just because you said it. And I understand Facebook's a powerful and can be a very good tool, but don't be under the impression because you put it on Facebook, we know about it, you know, so.
Well, and again, don't believe it's true. I mean, so many of those, I have something reported three years ago, no. That's ridiculous.
It's just sad.
So? Is that it?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Moving on, finance and audit, Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for your application, there are 60 streets in the village of Green Hills, not one. So.
Did you get Adele Walk?
Yes. Yes, I did.
The financial report was, was placed at your picture desk tonight. It came from the Finance Director earlier this month for the recap of the revenues, expenses, and transfers for the month of May. You'll note that, that May this year was, was very healthy. We are ahead of year to year and certainly looking back to fiscal year 2019 before the pre, the pandemic. It's, it's quite, quite good in that regard. Real estate taxes are on target. The general fund for the year is on target. Currently, the general fund balance for, as of May 2021 is $1,496,231.22, which is an increase over last, last year, which is a little bit of a misleading number, but we're, we're ahead by $261,248. Expenses are, are being maintained, even in comparison to expenses just, just one year ago. They're staying on target, and we are holding true to our general fund appropriation. At this point, spending approximately 27% of our annual appropriations. Transfers, there's no change from the previous one. And one other thing I want to note is that we will be, be passing a resolution on the 2022 tax budget, and whatever the resolution of the federal monies that may have happened is, is involved as far as the rescue plan, those monies are not included in the, in the tax budget. As you remember in our discussions, that those, those are kept separate, you know, really till we saw them, that they were actually.
Things, as they're changing, they're going on us all of a sudden.
So just, just wanted to clarify that point. Say it again when we get to that resolution.
That's the end of my report. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. When you said the income tax amount here, that includes all income tax with the delay in collecting them, not April 15th, but the delay when we don't have any outstanding?
Well, it, it may, it may resemble a, a small portion of it, but that, but nothing from Rita would have been reported.
Okay. Because they're rolling numbers, you know.
Okay. When would the Rita actual amount would be reported? Would be in July, maybe?
Well, they're always a month, a month behind.
Behind, uh-huh.
Okay. So, yeah.
All right.
We'll be able to tell once we close June, then we'll be able to have good solid numbers for the first half of the year.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
But, but again, the June and July were crazy months last year for the pandemic.
Definitely, definitely. Definitely. Yeah, I know.
It'll look strange. So, that's all.
All right, moving on. We have no unfinished business, new business, resolution number 2021-13-F, resolution accepting the Green Hills 2022 tax budget. Mr. Lee, I assume you're doing that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2021-13-F, resolution accepting the Green Hills 2022 tax budget. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section one, that the Council of the Village of Green Hills accepts the 2022 budget as prepared by the municipal manager and finance director attached heretofu and incorporated herein by reference. Section two, that this resolution shall be in full force and take effect upon its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Move for second, any comments or questions?
Again, no, none of the federal relief money is included in this tax budget, and the Finance Director will be forwarding this to the county by the 24th of July, if not sooner.
Twenty.
Okay.
And this is just a roadmap of what we hope will accomplish. The real operating budget expenses will be the appropriations at the end of the year. Okay, clerk call the roll.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Lasmona Lou?
Aye.
Resolution number 2021-13-F passes. Next is resolution number 2021-14-F, resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the 10-mill limitation and submitting such levy to the electors' current operation expense. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2021-14-F, resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the 10-mill limitation and substituting such levy to the electors' current operating expense. Whereas the village council desires to continue to provide the residents of Green Hills with the necessary governmental services, and whereas in order to continue to provide for the current operating expenses of the village, the village council has determined that it is necessary to renew the current operating expense levy for the village as authorized by Ohio Revised Code 5705.9A of the Ohio Revised Code for the current operating purposes. And whereas the amount of taxes which may be raised within the 10-mill limitations will be insufficient to provide the, an adequate amount for the necessary requirements of the Village of Green Hills, Hamilton, Ohio. And whereas, Hamilton County, Ohio, pardon me. Whereas Hamilton County Auditor has certified to the village that the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by a levy of tax at a rate not exceeding 3.28 mils for each $1 valuation equals $64,089, and based upon the total estimated tax valuation of the village of $61,841,160. And whereas, the village council desires to submit the 3.28 mil levy, renewal, current operating expense levy to the electors of the village at, at the general election to be held in November 2nd, 2021. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Hamilton County, Ohio. Two-thirds of all members elected heretofu concurring. Section one, that it is necessary to levy a tax in excess of the 10-mill limitation for the benefit of the Village of Green Hills pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5705.19A for current operating expense purposes at a rate not exceeding 3.28 mils for each $1 valuation, which amounts to $26.92 for each $100,000 of market valuation for five years, and which levy is a renewal levy of 3.28 mils. Section two, that the question of the renewal levy be submitted to the electors of said Village of Green Hills at the November election, to be held at the usual voting places within said Village of Green Hills on the second day of November 2021. Section three, that said tax levy be placed upon the tax list for the tax year 2021, first due in the calendar year 2022, if a majority of the electors voting therein vote in favor thereof. Section four, that the clerk of the Village of Green Hills be and hereby directed to certify a copy of this resolution to the Board of Elections, Hamilton County, Ohio, and notify said Board of Elections to cause notice of election on the question of levying said tax to be given as required by law. Section five, that it is found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council in any of its committees that result in such formal action were in meetings open to the public and in compliance with all legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section six, that this resolution shall be, be in effect immediately upon its adoption. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Move for second, any comments or questions?
I just want to make sure that everybody knows that is a renewal. The citizens will not increase their taxes in any way, shape, or form. This is a renewal that we have been having ever so often, it's every five years or so. And I, I don't know since when it started that, but I, as far as I can remember, we have done that, so.
Right. And, and the effective rate, because when you get your tax bills, they do talk about effective rates, the effective rate is about 1.03 mil. So if we passed a 1.03 mil levy today, it would generate the same amount of money that this 3.28 does. Okay, clerk call the roll.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Ms. Lasmona Lou?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number 2021-14-F passes. And we need a motion to go into an executive session, and we'll adjourn from council at that, after, at the end of the executive session without taking any action, is that correct?
Correct.
But should we do the municipal calendar, since nobody will be here when we adjourn?
Community development tomorrow, June 23rd, from 1:00 to 2:00.
Followed by recreation tomorrow, June 23rd, from 2:00 to 3:00. June 25th, this Friday, is our movie night, 8:45 is when the movie will start.
The Fourth of July is going to happen before our next meeting, just FYI.
Happy Fourth of July, and there'll be a concert next week at 7:00 on Wednesday.
Close on rules on August 24th, safety as well.
What was the time of the community development meeting?
It was 1:00 to 2:00.
1:00 to 2:00, is it here?
Uh, yes, it is. And then recreation follows that, 2:00 to 3:00.
Okay, who's making the motion for executive session?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we go into executive sessions for purposes of considering the sale or purchase of property.
Second.
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Ms. Lasmona Lou?
Aye.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
And Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, going into executive session, and like I said, nothing, no action will be taken at the end.